Okay, we got a thumbs up. So, good evening, everyone. I will call our city council meeting to order tonight at 6:30 PM. And I would like to start with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if Councilmember Garnica could lead us in the pledge, thank you.
Hand over the arc, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Brogi.
Here.
Mayor Protan Mendez.
Here.
Mayor Villa Señor.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Garnica.
Here.
Okay, wonderful. Now I will look for item number four, approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a first.
I second that motion.
And second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Agenda is approved. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation. "Perversing Our Neighborhoods: A Look at Vandalism Prevention." Thank you.
Good evening, council residents of Fillmore. My name is Georgie Gerardo and I'm a management analyst here for the Public Works Department. Today, we have an educational presentation I put together, kind of educating the community on some of the battles we have against vandalism here in the city. Get started. First topic is graffiti. In 2024, we opened and closed over 110 work orders for graffiti on public and private property. We kind of request residents to assist us by reporting any instances of graffiti to the Fillmore Police Department as well as the Public Works Department. If graffiti is actively happening, obviously call the police department first. Nonetheless, once it gets reported to Public Works, we'll create a work order and take care of that as soon as possible. When it comes to private property, the department is re-engaging with a procedure that's been under-prioritized, and that's ensuring we receive a consent to entry form to remove graffiti from private property. It's valid for one year, and it's just a simple agreement between homeowners and the city, allowing us to take care of that at no cost to the homeowner. Destruction of irrigation systems or sprinklers. In recent months, our city irrigation systems have been damaged multiple times and have been targets of repeated vandalism. And you can see some of the photos there, the damage it causes. Those are all a bunch of sprinkler heads. They kick them off. Yeah. Yeah, once they're up and spraying at night or whatnot, someone runs by and kicks them off. So we encourage the community to, you know, educate our younger generation to help protect public spaces. I think it's essential we all work together to ensure the city's preservation. Rocks. Rocks have been found to be an issue here in the city. City staff has found rocks in our playgrounds, on the surfaces, as well as the shade structures. I understand, you know, we all understand kids are kids and they like to play in the dirt and with rocks and whatnot, and that's okay. We just want everyone to be mindful and clean up after themselves. Rocks have also been found in our city pool. When the pool covers are on, this damages the pool covers. When the pool covers are off, the rocks land straight in the pool and potentially damage the vacuum. It's not meant to pick up large rocks. As well as the tennis courts, those were, the lights there, the tennis court were damaged with rocks. So just to keep everybody mindful, if you see anyone throwing rocks, say something. It's everyone's job to kind of help each other stay accountable. The photo right there in the middle is a large rock we pulled out of the fountain here in front of City Hall. It was used to smash the lights. All we can really do is file a police report and hope it doesn't happen again. So that's another thing to be mindful of. Playground shade structures. Two Rivers Park received new shade structures, and they were a much-needed upgrade to the playground. Unfortunately, they were quickly vandalized and will need to be repaired. You can see the slice there. If you see something, say something, like I said. I'll kind of just piggyback off that. The split rail fences are constantly damaged, knocked down, graffitied, or sometimes completely dismantled like that in the photo. I don't have much to add to that, just kind of putting it out there to make people aware of that as well. Ignoring official city signage. A number of individuals in the community appear to disregard official signage posted throughout the city. Mostly are park close signs, but additionally our bike trail closure signs are frequently ignored and in some cases destroyed, like that photo you see there. The closures are in place to implement and prioritize safety and ensure, you know, the well-being of the community. This past maintenance season, you know, fences were jumped, gates were jumped, the fields were walked on, played on, and damaged. So we do thank the residents and sports organizations who were patient and flexible with us during the closure period, and we hope to see more of that from the rest of the community in the seasons to come. Illegal dumping. There's been an increase of illegal dumping in alleyways, bike paths, and all throughout the city. The Public Works Department will, in conjunction with the police department, continue to monitor and investigate these dumpings to assist with some of the clutter we all can, you know, build up over time. The city offers the Cleanup Day on the last Saturday of September. That's located at Well 4, which is on Good Enough Road, east of B Street, west of A Street. And that's for trash, furniture, couches, bed frames, I believe yard waste as well. But that is for trash. And for hazardous household waste, Ventura County Public Works assists the city to offer two events annually. One in the spring, first Saturday of April, and one in the fall, the first Saturday of October. That is at our Public Works Yard, 711 SSB Avenue. Paint, chemicals, batteries, anything hazardous. And if life gets busy and you can't make any of these days, EJ Harrison offers two large item pickups annually, and Ventura County Public Works offers their waste facility year-round in Ventura if you need to use that. And that's the end of the presentation. I'm open to any questions. If not, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Georgie.
Thank you very much, Georgie. I do have a question, or I guess maybe it's a suggestion. I know that we have our one annual day there at Well 4. I think we had it every September?
Correct.
Okay. I know this past September, I was, you know, kind of letting the community know, and so I got a whole handful of people saying, "I missed it. I didn't know." You know, and I know that the city sends out notices and postings on social media. But has there ever been, or might there be a consideration of maybe a spring and a fall day? Just an idea. You know, I know resources, you know, go into that, that sort of thing. But I think that that might be something that we can really promote, and especially just locally, how people would like to have that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I can talk with the team and maybe we can work with EJ Harrison. I know they assist us on that day, and see if we can schedule a second day or something like that.
Also, if I may just add, EJ Harrison also has two free pickups of bulk items. So it's typically, the information's provided in the trash flash that they mail to everyone. It's also on their website, so you could just call the number and you can get bulk pickup if needed as well. And that can just be off the cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Real quick, Georgie. Are you seeing, first of all, it's an excellent presentation. And I think if, just visualizing these photos and seeing how bad it's getting, and from my perception, and tell me if you agree with this, are things getting worse in this regard? You know, it's heart-wrenching to see these brand-new awnings of the play equipment being sliced.
Yeah, I mean, I've only been here for a couple of years, but from what I've seen, it's been pretty steady as far as vandalism. I mean, I'm sure there are some things that are getting worse. But I just think we need to just stay on top of it and keep everybody in the city communicating with each other. If they see these issues, just say something. Police department and public works staff can't be at the park all day or wherever all day, so it takes all of us.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying, you know, see something, say something. And I don't want to embarrass Norma here, but you know, Norma's really good about letting us know when the parking lot behind Central is, you know, graffitied up or there's trash or vandalism back there. And I think that's the example that I'd love to see the rest of the community take on. And no one likes to be quote-unquote tattletale, but this is our community. And this is sad, and we don't have the finances to continue to repair and, you know, the shade structures and that kind of thing. So anyway, but thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Georgie, I have one other question for you that I just thought of. And that is on the graffiti on private property and, you know, the consent form that needs to be signed. A question on if it's private property and maybe someone is storing, just using this example, a large truck, and that truck is graffitied. Are you looking for, would consent need to come from the owner of the truck or the property? If it's two different people?
Yeah, so the form, the form has more details as far as what we will clean and won't clean. I don't think it would apply to a vehicle. It'd be more your home or a wall adjacent to the right-of-way. If it's something that we really can't see from the street or from the right-of-way, I mean, it's not something we're really going to take care of. It's up to the department, and we, you know, look at every situation differently. But for the most part, a car probably wouldn't be covered.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Yes.
So I just want to say, a great presentation. I really appreciate that. I had a privilege of seeing in District 1, there was a lot of graffiti that was along a whole alleyway that was cleaned up. Great efforts. And I think, was it last city council meeting? We saw a hotline for graffiti cleanup. I think that was great, and as we continue to tackle this challenge, it's good to see that people are on top of it at the end of the day. So regarding the rocks, some of the pictures I saw were from Rio Vista Park. I think that's the name of it, right? At Two Rivers Park, I'm sorry. Two Rivers Park, there is a playground there that, on the west end of it, there is a restroom, as well as there is a mound of dirt on the other side. Some of those rocks, I've seen kids play with them. If I take my son out there, there's oftentimes children playing with rocks, collecting them and looking at them and storing them, and they just leave them under the playgrounds. That's aside from the flinging them to cameras, which is a whole nother issue. But I'm wondering if there's anything that Public Works can look at around that playground where there is rocks and dirt mounds where children are prone to play. They'll play on the dirt too, on the mounds of dirt that have tarp on top of it. I've seen them play on top of it. I'm not their parents, so I can't tell them to get off of that. But I think that's something that can be looked at. I know that it's an ongoing project in that area, but I think rocks can be mitigated by maybe covering that space with something else. I don't know. Anyways, I was just thinking about that because I saw the pictures and I see that it is an issue in every park, I'm sure. But in that particular playground, the playground is surrounded by rocks. So if there's a way to keep kids from playing with the rocks, then that would help as well. But overall, great presentation. It's very informative. I really hope that the citizens are tuning in and taking this information in because it's very valuable and I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, very good point, Councilmember Rodriguez. I do agree that playground has many, many rocks right alongside of it. So maybe something can be done there. Okay, thank you for that presentation, Georgie. Our next item is public comments, and we do have several public comments. This is general public comment time for items that are not on today's agenda. And I will take them here in the order that I receive them. And first is Norma Amado. Thanks, Norma.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As usual, I'm always nervous. That won't ever change. Okay, I'm here to talk about a special notice I got, the new sales and use tax effective April 1st of 2025. I've been on Central as a business for 32 years now. I've lived in Fillmore for 74 years now, and it's changed a lot. Downtown Central, store-by-store, business-by-business is shutting down. I see it. There's another one that's going to shut down in a few days. We need community support really badly. Fillmore is still 7.25% tax on everything that is purchased. 1% of all of that goes back into our general funds, and we need that very badly. Other counties in California, now again, we are 7.25. I have the paperwork here. If anybody wants to come to my shop and see it, or you can look it up. Other counties are from 8.25 to 11.25%. So Fillmore is amazing that we're just a little over 7. After talking to other small businesses, we agree, and we all talked about it, we agree that only 10% to 15% of all Fillmore residents visit downtown stores. All of you in this room today, you know if you're one of them. And what's happening, we used to get a lot of foot traffic when we had the train running and we had the filming communities. But right now, there's no train, no filming communities, and Fillmore locals, I'm sorry. But a lot of you don't even bother to come into the stores. We're not saying you have to buy anything. Walk in, look around, walk out. If you don't find what you want, that's fine, but at least come and see what we've had or what we do have. You'd be surprised. Now that we have CVS next to us, people that are out there, locals, waiting for their prescriptions, they're just standing outside waiting five or 10 minutes. So they walk into the shops, and they're like, "Wow, we've never seen this before. We never knew you guys had all this. I wish more Fillmore residents would walk in." If you don't want to buy it, don't, but just come in and look. For all the years I've been here, again, we've had many, well, actually,
Norma, just 30 seconds.
My parents have had businesses here since 1940s, okay? A lot of locals complain a lot, Fillmore has nothing to offer. Yes, we do. The problem is, as local residents, you don't support us. You need to support us. And being that I have 30 seconds left, all I can say is, a lot of the empty stores, landlords, please, lower your rates a little bit, your rents. Keeping your rents really high when businesses cannot afford to open, then the buildings are empty. It's better to get a little bit rather than nothing. And next time I talk, please give me five minutes. Three is two. Thank you so much, and I hope you all visit the stores, even if you buy nothing. Just come downtown and look. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Okay, our next speaker is Brandy Hollis. Welcome, Brandy.
Hi. Good evening, Brandy Hollis. I'm coming to speak to you guys today on behalf of the Fillmore Civic Pride Committee. We have our annual flower show coming up, so we have the flyer. And this year, there's been a major revamp. We've had a lot of people join in. We're trying to really upgrade it. We are offering free entry this year for anybody that wants to enter, adults or children. We have guest judges coming from out of town and in keeping with the Fillmore spirit, the title this year is Fillmore Spirit in Bloom, hopefully to match up with, you know, the city's branding to anything, the car commission's doing, that sort of thing this year. So hopefully, we can have a unified city. So hopefully, people will come out. I left you guys flyers. Anna Riley designed this new brochure this year, so it's really beautiful. And I believe my little one's going to come up and speak to you about how much fun she had last year participating in the flower show. We kind of did it last minute because they needed support. So my children went out to support the flower show and helping them set up. So if anybody needs community service hours, I know a lot of people would love to sign off on those hours. Council, if you guys would like to come out to support, we'd love it. And if anybody has any raffle basket items or donations, I do have a beautiful thank you letter prepared for that as well. So once again, you guys all have a flyer. It's free this year, April 26th and 27th. And yeah, so that's all I have for you today on that. Thanks, you guys.
Question, Brandy?
Yes.
Did they charge last year?
Yeah, they did, and it was minimal. I think it was $5 entry fee, flat rate for adults. And then it was, you can enter multiple divisions, so. I had never done it before, but I'm a rose enthusiast. And so we were like, okay, let's try it. And you know what? We placed, and my daughter placed, and it was just, it was fun. We work hard in our garden, so it was neat. It was something we'd never done before, and a lot of people don't know about it or they hear about it. But like I said, we've had a big group come together and tried to revamp it, and hopefully, it's going to be good this year. So please come out, please support it, please enter, bring your kids. It's fun.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the Fillmore spirit matching with the branding. I think it's great. And it's community spirit. It's wonderful. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Cooper Hollis. Welcome, Cooper.
Hello. Today, I want to talk about the Little League. I play for the Little League Major's Yankees. My coach, my head coach is Gene Perez. I have opening ceremonies on Friday at 6 o'clock, and I have a game at 4 on Saturday. You guys could all come. I'm invited, and that's it.
Thank you, Cooper.
Cooper, what time was the opening ceremonies?
I think he said 6:00 PM on Friday. Okay, and I'll also take, so Little League has opening ceremonies at 6:00 PM this Friday, and softball has opening ceremonies at 8:00 AM Saturday morning.
Which park?
This is at Shields Park. Well, actually, oh, Little League is at, where is it at? The Little League Field. Makes sense. Okay. Okay, thank you, Cooper. Next speaker is Harley Hollis. Welcome, Harley.
I just want to talk about the flower show. I want every kid in Fillmore to come because it's a really fun activity to do. And that's it.
Thank you, Harley. There will be activities for the kids there, so Harley's encouraged. What was that?
A potty table.
And a potty table. Okay, great, wonderful. Thank you, Harley. Okay, and I'd like to share here. Our last public speaker is Rowdy Hollis.
Okay, welcome, Rowdy.
Opening ceremonies today, and I'm inviting all of you guys. My coach is James Page, no, not James Page, Nathan Page. It's on 6:00 PM today, and I play for the Brewers' winery team.
Okay, thank you, Rowdy. And I love the flag. I love the Brewers' team spirit. It's awesome. Thank you. Yeah, props, exactly. Thank you. Thank you, Cooper and Rowdy and Harley for coming today and sharing and getting our community and the kids enthused about sports and about the flower show. Thank you. Okay, I don't think we have any more public comments, so we'll move on to agenda item number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments. Turn it over to council. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so just a couple items, not as lengthy as last time. So I attended the Fillmore Pyru Groundwater Basin District. No major decisions made there. There was a presentation about the budget that was given, as well as an update on the modeling that they do for the groundwater for the Pyru and Fillmore Basins. And then on Saturday, I attended the goal-setting for the city council. I thought it was very productive, and the moderator was very good. She kept us on task and kept us moving and kept it lively, so it was very good. I thought it was my first time having that kind of a goal-setting session, and I thought it went very well.
All right, thank you, John. Any others?
I wanted to second that, what John said about the goal-setting session on Saturday. I think it went great. It was good to collaborate with my colleagues as well as the executive staff and look to what is important to the city from our perspectives, but as well as keeping an open mind for what the public thinks and what we've been hearing for the last few weeks, months, and years. I also wanted to mention that I did meet with a former city council member, Chris Garola, and it was nice to communicate with him and get his perspective on the tasks that he worked on in his tenure. Some of you know that I'm new here, and a lot of the decisions that are being made and a lot of the work that's being done takes a lot of months, sometimes over a year. But I don't want to push it further than more than one year because then the staffs might be like, "Hey, Louise, you're trying to send the message that we're not getting stuff done. You guys are getting stuff done." And projects don't last very long. But they last long enough so that a project might start and a decision might start rolling by the time we are elected. We are here to make decisions on projects and decisions that had started rolling prior to our election. So I think it's good and important to meet with former and current council members that have a lot of insight and have spent a lot of time and hours ironing out a lot of details that are pertinent to today's business. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. Grateful to spend time with current and former city council members. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
Let's go ahead. I want to also express how great Saturday was with a goal-setting session. I've been to several goal-setting sessions over the years, both here and through my career, my day job. And this just far exceeded from my perspective any goal-setting session that we've done before. And it was really effective, I think, as a council. And I just want to share too that we received extremely positive feedback from the facilitator who came in to lead this process about the congeniality and the respect and just what a great, compared to other cities she's worked with, a great council that Fillmore has now. And I did of that as well. So that was a huge success. The other thing I wanted to report is, I have been sitting for the last two years, three years, on the Ventura Council of Governments, and that is exactly how it sounds. It's a council of other city council members and governments within the county of Ventura, and I'm on the administrative board for that. So I just went, we just found out, maybe in November, October, November, that our executive director, who's been the executive director for Ventura Council of Governments for many years, wanted to... wanted to retire. So we went through an interviewing process a week ago. We've chosen a new executive director and I see great things to come in that role that I play representing Fillmore on the Ventura Council of Governments. So we're excited about that. I can't tell you yet. I'm going to let them announce it. Yeah, the name of the new executive director will be forthcoming, so. And then I just want to, a reminder, I mentioned this at the last council meeting, that tomorrow evening, 6 to 8:00 PM, is my first, I'm calling it a porch talk at my home for anybody interested in questions, sharing things about Fillmore. And it's going to be an open house. Come up anytime between 6 and 8 and we'll just talk about Fillmore. So, and the community is welcome. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you, Albert?
Yes. Last Thursday, I attended the Ventura County Animal Services Committee. And we, they, we reviewed the new conceptual drawings for the future shelter, yeah. So I mean, it looks good. I mean, they started from scratch and they submitted one, I think, last year, the last time they, they went around. But it was too expensive, so they had to go back and revisit it. And I think this plan maximizes their use of plans. It's not like approved yet, it's just conceptual. But I mean, I think it'll work good for the counties and the cities that participate in those services.
All right, thank you. And I do have a couple of updates and I just, I'm not going to reiterate, but absolutely 100% on board with, with all the comments from my fellow council members. Our goal setting session was really effective. Wonderful job done by the facilitator. And you know, what, what made, it made it crystal clear that we all have one similar priorities, different council members, very similar. And we're able to sort of get those priorities where we have the commonality together. And it also made it very clear that we can't have, you know, 15 priorities. We can have just a handful that as, as a council can direct policy and that our city manager can direct staff to help accomplish for the year, or actually the next two years. So it was, it was exercise in narrowing down and gaining consensus. And it was really, really well done. So a couple of updates from committees and meetings that I've been to. I went to the Santa Paula Hospital Blue Ribbon Committee earlier this month. And this is a committee of community members, local leaders and also the executive staff of Santa Paula Hospital. And they're just kind of sharing some information. So Santa Paula Hospital, just their intensive care unit as well as their labor and delivery unit both closed last fall. But the hospital is still there. It's a 49-bed licensed hospital and the emergency department is actually very robust, to put it in the words of the, the head medical director for, for the hospital. Let's, I just wanted, just to let folks know. Let's see here, ER visits have rebounded. In January, they had the most ER visits in the last five years. Inpatient, there's between 300 and 400 a month inpatient at the hospital. In January, though, it was at 500, a little over 500 for inpatient stays at Santa Paula Hospital. Surgeries, and they're starting to rise up with outpatient scheduled services, surgeries and procedures, about 180 a month. And they're relying less on travel nurses. And that's a positive because travel nurses increase costs, inconsistent patient care perhaps. And maybe, you know, they might disrupt team dynamics. So it's really good that they're sticking with Santa Paula Hospital staff. I don't want to go into too many details. But I know the community's interested in, in that intensive care unit closure, you know, in particular. And just one though, in January, there was 64 transports from folks who arrived to the emergency room who needed to be transferred to Ventura County Medical Center, the larger hospital in Ventura. And just response times. A minute and 45 seconds for an ambulance to arrive after initial call of an ER patient who needs to be transferred to VCMC. And about five and a half minutes for an ambulance to arrive at Santa Paula Hospital for an inpatient, so someone who's already been hospitalized and is inpatient at the hospital. Let's see, they're also working on, want to increase the volume of, again, like gastrointestinal surgeries. They are also working on increasing language, indigenous language training. So trilingual, English, Spanish and indigenous languages as we have an increasing population of indigenous. Not just, mostly there's been sort of the Oxnard area of the county, but here in the Santa Clara Valley, there's Misteco, Zapotec and Porechapa. So that's something that, that the, the hospital is engaging with and, and doing training on. Let's see here, the, one of the big issues, don't want to go into too much detail, but they continue to wrestle with the future of the hospital. And I think it's in 2030 or 2033, which is about five, eight years from now, Santa Paula Hospital, it is, it needs to either be retrofitted, which is too expensive to do, or hopefully be moved to the intersection of Hallic and 126. But that's a continuing discussion and, and sort of a newest obstacle that's out there, unfortunately, is the, the pathways into the hospital from Hallic and 126 there at the outskirts on the eastern end of Santa Paula and the, the amount of exits to leave the hospital. It's called ingress and egress. And so there, there's concerns there, but the right people are in the room. They are meeting, whether it's Ventura County Fire, again, hospital folks, Santa Paula and the city planners and of course elected officials and community stakeholders. So I'll continue to keep everyone updated about, updates on Santa Paula Hospital and the future of Santa Paula Hospital. Sorry, I know that was kind of a, a lot there, but that's important. The, you know, we really need to do what we can to advocate for continued access to, to our hospital here in the Santa Clara Valley. Let me see here. Couple other updates. Oh. Also attended Ventura Regional Sanitation District. This is the one where we're on the board. Fillmore represents our interest in Tolan landfill, our landfill between Fillmore and Santa Paula as well as, well, in other areas of the county, the sanitation district handles wastewater. The biggest issue that's sort of, it's not really an issue, but just something that we're keeping our eye on is that the Palisades, the Pacific Palisades and the Eaton Fire have fire debris. Lots and lots and lots, tons of debris from the burned out, burned down houses. There are 17 landfills across Southern California that are taking this debris. Tolan is not one of them. So we just want to let the community know that Tolan landfill does not, one, accept any waste from outside of Ventura County and Tolan landfill does not accept hazardous waste. And this is considered hazardous waste because think of, you know, burned out houses and all the, the batteries and the appliances and, you know, and everything that, that burned. So you may have heard in the news, Calabasas landfill is a landfill that is accepting. Again, Calabasas is in LA County, but there have been protests and there have been dump trucks that have been turned away because of protests at Calabasas. So, you know, we're, again, Tolan does not accept it, but we understand that oftentimes in communities, they may, folks within other communities or maybe even, you know, representatives in other communities may be looking elsewhere. So we're just, you know, we're just keeping an eye on that. But the bottom line is that Tolan is not, does not accept any debris from the Palisades or the Eaton Fire. Okay, sorry. Last update is from the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance. And the latest info on this one is that through the Federal Department of Transportation, the Energy Alliance received $12 million for a grant called the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant Program. And this was $12 million to help, let me see here, along, along the 101 corridor, not so much on 126 just yet, but along the 101, is going to install 21 DC fast chargers, 72 Level 2 charging stations along the 101 corridor here in Ventura County. Let's see here, they, so the county has a signed contract with the Federal Department of Transportation. And unfortunately though, they let us know they have been locked out of the portals to access and to draw down payment. And that's, that's the information we have right now. They were ready to submit their first claim. They bill in arrears and every day they were checking to see the portal status. So we're, we're hoping that the Department of Transportation allows the county to draw down the 12 million funds they have to do EV charging infrastructure in our county. Okay. I think that's the last update I have. Okay. All right, we'll move along now to item number eight, Consent Calendar. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Okay, first.
I'll second.
And second from Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next item, we're moving on to new business. And item 9A, our appointments to the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission, our car commission. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members and Fillmore residents. And this report is to appoint the new appointments to the car commission. So staff recommends that the city council, consistent with the mayor's recommendation, reappoint Ms. Brandy Hollis, Mr. Greg Agostinelli and Ms. Karina Forsythe to the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission. And I do apologize, when this report was published, Ms. Karina's name was not on there, but I did reach out and she is here today. So sorry about that. So there were three seats on the car commission that expired on January 31st, 2024. Typo, apologize. Actually, no, that is correct. So the city advertised these vacancies and the applications were received by the Human Resource Department and reviewed by the ad hoc committee with, or the, the city council ad hoc interview committee, which consists of the mayor and council member Brogie. And so they reviewed them and they also did an intensive interview process. And so, yes, through their recommendation, they decided to appoint these three members back to the car commission. And they are commissioners that have been serving at the car commission in the past. And so if approved, the new terms will, will be four-year terms and it will end on January 31st, 2029. And there is no fiscal impact. And this item meets city council goals to fill all vacancies on city councils and board, and boards. And I do want to note that they do meet quarterly on the fourth Wednesday of every month. And staff is currently working behind the scenes scheduling the first meeting. And I do have Ms. Karina and Ms. Brandy here today. I don't know if they would like to say any words. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Karina, Brandy, would you like to say anything?
I'm happy to serve again on the commission and I look forward to bringing to city council a lot of the ideas I have for the city.
Thank you.
Hi, Brandy Hollis. And once again, I just want to, you know, stress the importance of unity with the city with different things going on. I have a lot of ideas and hopefully we can see those out and bring out Art Walk this year. I think we're in line to do that as well. So there's new things coming to the city and bringing back the music. So I look forward to it. And hopefully we'll see you all out there at the events. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Just a quick comment after going through the MAB process. And I, just speaking as someone who has no art or ability whatsoever, it just amazes me the number of people in Fillmore that came forward that had an interest in this and working in the Parks and Rec and in the art arena of our community. I was amazed, but I'm so happy that we're able to bring back three that have been on the board already. So I just appreciate that. Thanks for doing that.
I also want to mention something. So grateful for, for Ms. Hollis and Forsythe for being here. And Mr. Agostinelli has, I've seen him performing around town and organizing these kind of music events. So just want to say thanks for the community organizing that you guys have already done and will continue to do. Thank you. I'm hopeful and excited for the future for the arts here in town.
Wonderful. We're so glad to have you both and Greg back on the car commission. So, and like, you know, we're going to do wonderful things and continue to do. We, I know Carrie and I both found that the three of you all brought such strength from things that you've already been doing and already part of the community and all these sort of events and projects that you've worked on, both on car and then just individually. You know, your volunteer efforts in other areas are just really a testament for your love for Fillmore. So welcome, welcome back. Hopefully. Oh, yes, John?
Just a quick question for Carrie. About how many people would you estimate were there, were applied?
We had, we had five. We had a big.
Yeah, we actually, I don't know how many actually applied, but I know we interviewed five.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo what council member Rodriguez said. Appreciate all you guys are doing for the community and we need more people like you because you guys are just doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate all your hard work. And I know you guys will bring your own unique talents to the city and thank you so much. I'm so appreciative of your service. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, I think we'll look for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay. All right, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, congratulations. Welcome back. Okay, we will move along to our next agenda item. And that is 9B, Water Wells 7 and 8, the boron levels update. Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, city council members. This report is in regards to boron levels that have exceeded state standard for notification levels. It's important to note that this is just a notification to council. These are not actionable levels of boron in our water system. The state has established notification levels for boron in drinking water at 1,000 milligrams per liter. This threshold does not require any immediate action, as I was saying. It does not require our wells to be shut down. It's just an official notification to the governing body of the jurisdiction that the wells are in. So on March 13th, 2023, Well 7 reached a boron level of just at that max, or that reporting level, or notification level of 1,000 milligrams per liter. And Well 8 on November 21st, 2022, exceeded the notification level by 500, reaching 1,500 milligrams per liter. This is a receive and file report. No action is again required. But I'd happy to answer any questions you may have about this, about our water quality.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick clarification. I think you meant to say micrograms, not milligrams?
Micrograms, yes.
Because that would be actually.
I'm sorry.
One, one milligram.
Yes.
Would be 1,000 micrograms.
We, yeah, it was reported in Well 7 as, as micrograms, but yes. Milli, micrograms, not milligrams.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just weigh in procedurally real quick?
Yes.
With the receive and file, we do need a motion and adoption to receive and file.
Okay.
If, if that's the council's pleasure. Thank you.
A question. How often are these tests run? And when do we?
So we sample our, our wells quarterly and are monitoring locations throughout the city on a weekly basis. It's rotating. So not all sample sites are, are done weekly. It's a rotating frequency for the various sample sites throughout the city. And then we do an annual big suite of constituents for sampling and reporting to the state.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, then that raises a question I have. You're saying quarterly they're tested?
Quarterly.
Okay. And then, so can you explain for me then, on the bottom, bottom of the first page of the report, under recent test results, they were sampled in March, Well 7 was March 23 and 8 was in November 22. So is it a different kind of testing?
Well, I think what this is indicating is that both wells didn't exceed together. They were done quarterly, but they both didn't exceed together.
But if, if it was done quarterly, wouldn't there be more recent testing results for?
Right, and we haven't exceeded the reporting level.
That have not exceeded?
Right, correct. Right, correct.
I'm sorry, I probably sound really, I'm asking obvious questions here. Okay, so then, wouldn't we have, why are we worried about tests that were, that exceeded the 1,500?
Two years ago. Correct, we should have been, we should report these more frequent.
Yeah.
But the way that the state's reporting system is set up, it's annual and we report in arrears by a year. So this coming May, no, June, sorry, June, we, we file our consumer confidence report disclosing all the water quality sampling in the city. That's for the 2024 year.
So I guess I'm just confused as to why are we talking about something that is far back as 2022, when we have more recent reports that didn't show this high level?
To my knowledge, they, nothing has exceeded since that have reached this reporting level, this notification level.
And we're also, so we're required by the Department of Drinking Water to do this whenever it exceeds. And so the last time this came for your consideration, I was the one who brought it up and I think it was in '21. And it came from this survey called sanitary survey that happens every two years, I think so?
Three.
Every three years. And so we hadn't been doing our due diligence to notify you and the public. And so it's only when it exceeds the level that we have to bring that forward.
Okay, so this is like catch-up?
Correct.
On notifying us?
Yes.
Okay, so.
To make sure that, and moving forward, we'll make sure that this happens.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So that we're not having to go backwards.
Okay, that makes sense. Now I understand, thank you.
Okay. So one last clarifying question then. If we're sending in our samples about six months?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. If there is a, if there is a notification of a, of an elevated level, we're, we're going to get that?
More immediate?
More immediately.
We can, yes.
Okay. All right, yes, John?
Okay, so from reading through the report, again, please, you know, excuse my ignorance here, but it, it sounds like this level is only for notification. There's not any kind of serious health risk from what I read about those boron levels. At what level would there be a concern for health to the residents of Fillmore? In other words, if let's say right now, it's, you know, the, the notification level clearly says 1,000 micrograms. So if it reached 10,000 micrograms, would that be of concern? Or what is that level where we'd have to be concerned about it?
So the, there's a health advisory for non-cancer health effects required by EPA at 5,000 micrograms per liter. That's not indicating that it's going to cause any serious distress, but when, when the levels, you know, I, there is no documented study that, that shows that there's a practical side to a level that we would encounter from the environment that would be detrimental to health, that would be causing a life? Concerns, yeah. And just to further that point, this is a printout of the maximum contaminant levels, the drink, or the, I'm sorry, the detection limit, reporting limits, and public health goals for drinking water contaminants. Boron is not on this. There are plenty of other things that we're looking at and watching, but the state and the Fed have not deemed boron to be a concern so much that needs to be on this.
Okay, it's helpful to know, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so we do have to have a motion then for a receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I'll second.
Okay, have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, motion carries. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. Okay, item number nine C, fiscal year 24, 25 mid-year financial report for fiscal year 24, 25, and approval of the mid-year budget adjustment recommendations. Okay, so Deborah?
Good evening, council members. Mayor BS Norem, Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item nine C has staff recommending to city council to receive and file the mid-year financial report and approve the proposed mid-year budget adjustments and classification HR request. This item complies with the following city council goals, which is the fiscal management goal, but also organizational excellence. For tonight's presentation, I'll be discussing the general and special revenue funds. Ambry Tabe will be, our county supervisor will be discussing the enterprise funds. And we also have Erica Herrera, our city manager, will discuss the HR positions. So, as discussed in our staff report, the general fund at this time is projected to be under its adjusted budget due to vacant positions and projected savings in police services. These savings, though, are offset by increases in the fire expense associated with public safety calls, strike team costs, which of course are reimbursed, but we have to ask, if we did have to ask for appropriations, and safety equipment needed because of the recent fires. The city council adopted the budget policy that allows the city manager to have the discretion to transfer appropriations between departments within the fund. So therefore, since we have an overage in fire, but have others that aren't, we're able to unmove the appropriations easily and so therefore the general appropriations to a crest at this time. Now, a budget adjustment of $87,042 is requested from the general fund for the recreation fund. This is for costs associated with the senior nutrition program, along with increases in furniture and equipment and general maintenance cost. The fund houses various services by the city with revenue provided by grants, fees, and general fund. The senior nutrition program is part of a federal government program, the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, Title III C. The Ventura County area, the aging, administers and monitors the program and provides the available funding to the various cities and agencies. The county also pays directly the food vendors, which also covers the entire meal cost. However, in fiscal year 24, 25, this is going to be a transition period. First, we will be, the city is now, as long as other agencies, have to now pay the bills directly ourselves. And second of all, due to the decreases in funding, we will now have to absorb more costs associated with the meal cost. Therefore, because of these, we will be requesting the additional appropriations for the program. Now, the budget adjustment of $63,000 is associated, from the general fund, associated for the community pool. The community pool is provided by service, pays for the operations of the pool. And there's, we have swimming lessons as well as providing other group lessons, recreational swim, as well as the, I think Fillmore Unified School District also has an agreement with us to utilize that pool as well. It's maintained by user fees partially, as well as a partial tax, and also, of course, the general fund. The request amount is to cover the liability and property insurance policy for the pool, along with increases associated with maintenance and supplies. So in this part, this is ending of my presentation, so I can ask, you can answer, ask questions and I can answer then, and then I'll have Ambry. I think I need some water.
Deborah, I have a question.
Yes.
So regarding the pool fund, so I happen to be on the school board when we transferred that over and the city took it over. And I know that the parcel tax was passed at that time. Has, has there been any change to the amount of the parcel tax?
From my understanding, no, it's been always.
It's been consistent, right? So then, follow-up question, was there any kind of mechanism to adjust the amount of the parcel tax along with the cost of inflation and all?
I believe in that problem, there was not.
No, there was not, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Deborah? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. I'm Ambry Tabe and I will be presenting the enterprise funds mid-year budget. The sewer operating fund is projected to meet the adopted budget requirements, so staff is not recommending budget adjustments at this time. Revenues are projected at 7.8 million and appropriations at 8.07 million at year-end. The C Street Emergency Sewer Repair Project, which occurred on March 2023 and was completed in November 2023, has been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. The application was accepted by FEMA and reimbursement request is nearing final review. Next is the Water Operating Fund. Staff is recommending a mid-year budget adjustment of $227,000 for anticipated costs associated with SCADA, generator, pipeline, and general maintenance. Sufficient funds are available within the Water Fund to appropriate the requested increase. The AMI meter installation and launch is currently in its final stages, final stages of the project. Training is ongoing with staff. There's a plan to launch the interactive customer portal, Aquahawk, which allows the customer to monitor their water usage, set up alert notifications, and access their billing information. That's the end of my presentation and available for any questions.
Thank you, Ambry.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, go ahead.
So you're saying, if I understand correctly, FEMA is going to reimburse us for part of that repair that was done?
Correct.
So is there any concern about, with the current administration, federal administration of FEMA, are any of those funds in danger?
As of now, there's no concern as of yet, so we're, I think we're still in a good position that we'll be receiving the funds that we have requested for.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to that, John, when you said that FEMA is reimbursing us for, for part of it, there actually, if things, if the numbers haven't changed, FEMA is reimbursing us for a great majority of the sewer collapse, meaning that, from what I remember, that from the city of Fillmore sewer funds, we were only going to be paid 6%, 6, 6% or 7%, somewhere in between there, of the total bill. So it was really big reimbursement. Yes, keep our fingers crossed, yes. Ambry, I just, I had a question for you regarding the, the Water Operating Fund and the appropriation of about $227,000. And just to kind of get an idea, you know, when you take 225, $227,000 from the larger water fund, how much is that leaving the main water fund? You know, or is it, is it a big amount of 227 or is it not so much?
It's very minimal. We are projecting an ending balance, projected balance, fund balance of 6.594 million. So we're just looking at 3 point something percent that's going to be taken out of our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful for us to sort of put in perspective that sometimes we need to make these budget adjustments and it might seem like a big amount, but we're really healthy in both of our sewer and our water funds, so just wanted to point that out to those who are, might be watching and listening. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'll continue the report. I'm requesting tonight also that council authorize the removal of the Human Resources Director Classification from our system and that you authorize to establish a new classification for the position of Human Resources Supervisor to be included in the city's salary schedule and in the budget. This is range 51 of our salary schedule, which equates to annual hours, working annual hours are 2,080 hours, with a range of 112, 914.53 being step one, step seven being 151,316. The reason for this is because our current structure doesn't have an HR supervisor. With the recent appointment of the Assistant City Manager to the City Manager, there is that lack of that position as the previous Assistant City Manager was partially holding a lot of the requirements and HR duties. Our personnel rules also have it where the City Manager is the hearing officer for any personnel matters, and so there has to be a distinction. And that's why we are asking for you to approve this position. I am anticipating if tonight you approve this, our Senior Management Analyst, Jackie Magdalena Herrera, has been doing an outstanding job, filling in the gap while we were having the vacancy of the ACM. And so I'm anticipating on just reclassifying her into the position and then backfilling the management analyst position. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, do we have any questions? Okay, all right, seeing none. All our questions were answered. I will entertain a motion on this item. You got it? You got it? Mayor Protem?
I will. I move that city council receiving file fiscal year 2024, 2025 mid-year financial report and approve the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 mid-year budget adjustments and remove the Human Resources Director Classification from the city's classification system and establish new classification for the position of Human Resources Supervisor to be included in the city's salary schedule and budget at a range of 51. On the current salary schedule, the annual hours of the position are 2,080 with a range of 112,914 to 151,000.
Okay, all right, a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. All right, we are on to, I think we gave most of our updates, but if there's any remaining committee, commission, board reports. Okay, seeing none. Agenda item 11, City Manager Verbal Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call Joe Belima to provide us with an update on the Well Seven emergency.
Just a quick update, Well Seven is installed and we were test pumping today. The contractor is within the budget, slightly delayed for several good reasons, primarily at my request. We didn't want a cleaning product to stay inside the well over the weekend with, you know, staying longer than it should have been. So I delayed them because of that. But we're test pumping today, tomorrow morning, and we're going to grab a water quality sample to get to the lab. There's about a 24-hour turnaround time on that sample, so we should be up and operational on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I also wanted to notify our residents that it's that time of the season. Again, we are hiring lifeguards and a pool manager, so please, if you have a teenager that needs a job this summer, send them our way, the application went live today on our website. You can give us a call if you have any questions. And we also have a community service specialist designated to the Parks and Recreation opening, which closes on March 1st. And I'm also very pleased to notify the public that we have known since December 23rd that the city was awarded a grant to address the encampment homeless. We were not able to notify the public or make a public announcement because HCD had us with what they call an embargo status, so we had to make sure that we went through the process and signed a contract. But I'm pleased to notify everyone that that was released today. And so we will be working on putting a press release tomorrow out to the public. We're looking forward to continue working with Spirit of Santa Paula, which will be providing case management. We are going to have some funds also to do homeless encampment cleanup and then work with other organizations as well as we move forward with the grant. It's going to be a multi-year grant. And so we will be working closely with Finance Department and other agencies to move this forward and we're excited about this because we think it'll be a great thing for our community. I also want to provide you with an update on February 26th, which is tomorrow. The Homeless Liaison Unit, deputies will be conducting a fire prevention operation in the river bottom. Deputy Knox will be also utilizing the Rio Vista Park area or going to that area. And then we will also be having backpack medicine on Thursday, March 27th, and in addition to the regular river bottom areas which are serviced. We also put on an FAQ today about a rondo and the cleanup that will be happening in conjunction with the Ventura County Safe, Fire Safe Council. And so please check our website, we posted that on Instagram, on Facebook. If you have any questions, reach out to us. And just lastly, I wanted to point out what our management analyst presented today. Please help us preserve your community and be Fillmore proud. You know, we You know, we, our staff does the best that we can to keep all of our facilities in best conditions, but we need your help also as a resident. And if you see something, say something. You know, if you, if there's a noise complaint, go through the proper channels, call, you know, Safety Department, 911 if it's after hours. And then also report any code enforcement issues. It's important for us to build that information so that we have the data. Sometimes we have to end up building a case, going to legal processes. And when we don't have that information, it's very hard for us to move forward the pendulum. So that's all the updates I have today. Thank you very much.
Question? Just real quick, well there, well at some point, I know since we got the grant, and thank you very much for that. I think that the community's been asking for that very much. At some point, will, will we be privy to a plan as to how those funds are going to be spent? And which organizations are going to do what? Will that?
Absolutely, yes. I will make sure to include some of the key players in the press release that I'll be working on tomorrow. And then we, I can prepare a presentation also so that the public and you are also aware of what we applied for. And there's a budget that we also submitted so that everyone has an idea.
Oh, that's great.
Where the funds are going to be going. And I forgot to mention the amount. It's a pretty large amount, which is $1.45 million.
Great. Yay.
That is a wonderful update. Thank you, all around. That we're moving, moving ahead on, on issues that are really important in our community and really trying to tackle, tackle the issues that we have at hand. So, thank you. Okay, alrighty then. It is agenda item 12. We are going to move into closed session. Just looking here, making sure I got my notes. We have one thing to discuss in closed section, conference with legal counsel. The city council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code sections 549569D2 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in three cases. Thank you.
The council was updated and there is no reportable action. And we will now adjourn the meeting until our next regular scheduled meeting which is at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, March 11th here at City Hall. Thank you.